...very accomplished. Throughout the time that she's been at Lunenburg High School, she's really distinguished herself as a scholar, as well as a leader and an athlete and a citizen. And she has focused her studies in the sciences there at Lunenburg High School, and she's taken many honors and AP coursework that have included biology, chemistry, anatomy, physics, and she even took a VHS Lorenzic Science Course. She's currently ranked at the top of her class. She attended Girl State last spring, and she also received a full scholarship to attend a three-day medical leadership conference that was sponsored by the Congress of Future Medical Professionals. Medical profession is in her future. Lauren has received numerous Academic Excellence Awards. Every year she's been at Lunenburg High School, including a certificate of honorable merit on the National Latin Exam, and last spring she received the St. Michael's College Book Award for Academic Achievement with Social Conscious. Lauren was elected president of the class of 2016, three of the four years, and she currently holds that honor. Of course, many of you know Lauren and will recall that she represented her school so very well and her classmates when she spoke, both at the groundbreaking and the topping off ceremony last year. In addition to her rigorous course of studies, she's a member of the National Honor Society and currently serves as treasurer of that organization. She's a member of the LHS math team, the Renaissance Club, World Hunger Task Force, Latin Club, Community Service Club, and the leadership group which we're going to hear more about later today. She's a preseason athlete, running cross-country, or she serves as captain. She'll be on the basketball court again this year for her fourth year, and in the spring she'll be back on the track as a member of the LHS varsity track team. Lauren has been active in her community as a summer volunteer at Health Alliance Hospital. She's a religious education teacher at St. Boniface, and she's been a camp counselor for the Lunenburg Track and Field Camp for the last three years as well. She selected for her quote, a quote from a wonderful woman and brave lady, Eleanor Roosevelt, and the quote reads as follows: "The purpose of life is to live it, to taste experience to the utmost, to reach out eagerly and without fear for new and rich experience." I'm privileged to recognize this accomplished young woman, and I ask you to please join me in applauding her many accomplishments.
And would you please introduce your parents who are with us here tonight?
My parents, Ken and Sue Baske are here tonight. You can stand up.
If they'd like to.
I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to be here tonight. I'd like to first thank Superintendent Combs for recognizing me with this award. I'd like to take a minute to recognize my parents for their love and support, as well as my sister Megan who couldn't be here tonight. I'd also like to thank my peers, friends, and teammates for pushing me to be my best through these past years at Lunenburg. And I'd also like to thank the administration and teachers of Lunenburg Public Schools for helping me reach my full potential inside and outside of the classroom. I consider myself very lucky to have been able to go through the Lunenburg Public School System from second grade up until graduation, and it's really an honor to be receiving this award, so thank you.
Lauren, this is a certificate from the Mass Association of School Superintendents just acknowledging your appointment as a superintendent scholar this year. And we'll be attending a wonderful luncheon at WPI this year. It's where the Worcester County Superintendents will be holding that, and you'll be joining the rest of the scholars from across Worcester County at that time. So congratulations again, and welcome.
The other part of our superintendent's report today that I'd like to introduce to you, one of our master teachers. The Master Teacher Program is a program within the Lunenburg Public Schools that acknowledges the great leadership and talents of so many of our teachers. It provides an opportunity for the district and the master teacher to work together around something that adds value to the school district and to the community, but also is able to create a space for the passion that the teacher has and is wanting to pursue. So it's a partnership that we have. And Mr. Short has been a master teacher since we started the program, and he's done a variety of things, including the SAT prep course, which we were so very happy to have somebody that could offer that prep class to our students and provide that here in our community with somebody that they know. And so that's offered in both the spring and the fall. But this year, one of the new pursuits Mr. Short has taken on is a leadership group there of students at Lunenburg High School. And he is here to talk about it, as well as a couple of our students, so I'm going to turn the mic over to him.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us here tonight. You've already, you know Lauren Baske and Emily Botkin are with me this evening. They're both members of what we call the Student Leader Group at Lunenburg High School. So what I'm going to do is just tell you a little bit about the group, tell you what some of our goals are, and these two guys are going to talk about where we're at with a couple of those different goals. So basically, the Student Leader Group, it's a group in the high school of anyone nine through 12 that wants to be a student leader in the school. They don't have to be elected, they don't have to have, to get voted in, they can have strengths of, you know, an interest of, you know, diverse variety, but they want to make changes, they want to make a positive impact on our school community. So the first goal was to obviously advertise this group, get people interested in it, get a variety of students to join, and that was very simple. We sent an email out through Naviance, got a ton of people to come. That was our first, you know, go at it. That was the start of our group. And then with the class meetings, the first week, I went in and spoke to each group, kind of explained it, and so it kind of took off from there. The group itself, what we've done so far, we did the eighth grade orientation, which Lauren will talk about that, but, you know, basically, we, the eighth grader showed up the day before the regular student body, and there was a bunch of stuff they needed to learn, how to do locks and lockers and tours and all that. So our group was responsible for kind of taking the lead on that. And then the second thing that we're working on is we're doing a student climate survey. We want to find out like what, especially with going to the new building and, you know, kind of starting fresh with such an awesome facility, we want to know like what does the student body really like about LHS? What would they like to see different? What would they like to see better? And so we're working, Mr. Normandin is also helping with the group with that, and he's helping us kind of, you know, get that survey going. And Emily will talk about where, what we've done so far with that. And then the third, the third thing, which is kind of our big goal for the year, is we're looking to set up a virtual tour for the new facility. So what we're thinking is we're going to, we're going to use, with technology, we're going to videotape a tour of the facility, and we're going to have this prepared for the student body and the public eventually for the spring, so that, you know, we can unveil it and, you know, maybe bring everybody into the auditorium, kind of like they do for the Hunger Task Force type video, and present the new school. And that would be part of that video, it wouldn't just be showing them the, you know, classrooms and gym and all that stuff, but it would also be answering questions they may have about the new facility and the transition to the new facility, and some of those questions would probably come from our survey. So, you know, things that they want to know, things that they're going to know about the building, and then we could intertwine them into the actual video. So, you know, we're at the beginning stages of all this, but this group of, you know, great students is all geared up, and we have, you know, kids that are good with technology, kids that are good, you know, with all sorts of different stuff that are going to add to this. And so I think, Lauren, why don't you talk about the eighth grade orientation and the survey, and then Emily can talk a little bit about where we're at with the tour?
So with the eighth grade orientation, basically, us as a group, we met the day before school started. We got together a game plan, and then the day that school started, we met with the eighth grade before any of the other high school students had come into the building. We had a general meeting, and then we split them up into like smaller groups, and we showed them around the school, we went over their schedules, we taught them how to unlock their locks, lock their lockers, do all that stuff, went over this agenda, and basically answered any other questions that they had, tried to make them feel comfortable in the school environment, and overall, it worked really well. They're all really good in the school right now, so that's that. And then the student climate survey, we've been working on finalizing the questions for it. We asked things about like advisory, about lunch, and about this general atmosphere at Lunenburg, and we're going to try to address those questions, like Mr. Short said, in the virtual tour video, and just in general for next year and beyond.
So, yeah, at the beginning of the year, we had a brainstorm session where we kind of threw out ideas, and one of the ideas that came out of that session was this virtual tour. And I know a lot of the kids at our school are curious about what this school's going to look like come next fall when they walk through the doors. So we thought it would be a great idea to partner up with the Public Access Channel, where I actually do my step internship, and we'll be able to go and film the new school, probably later in the spring when the school is more realistic. And hopefully be able to address a lot of the questions that our fellow students have about the new school. So it's one of our bigger projects, and we're really excited to start it.
She just made me think, too. So the virtual tour, it really came out of a brainstorm session with the kids, you know. We knew we had to do the eighth grade orientation, but the student climate survey and the tour was really, you know, we just, I just had the premise that, you know, we need to do some kind of community service type of thing, and so it was really student-driven, both of these things. As far as, you know, the logistics of the group, we meet once, we meet the first Monday of every month, right after school, in my room, and then we're probably going to form sub, you know, a subcommittee or subgroup once we get rolling on the virtual tour. But, you know, there's been great participation so far with the kids, you know, for the eighth grade orientation, they had to come in over the summer, you know, a couple of days early to get organized for that, and we had like thirty, thirty-something kids come in. You know, we use an email to communicate, and just a great group. And the kids can come in and out, you know, if they have a field hockey game and they have to miss that Monday because they're on a bus, it's not a huge deal, you know, it's not, you know, we want to make it flexible so that, you know, we have steady participation throughout the year. And that's, that's it. That's part of my master teacher program, and it's, you know, great to have students like this to work with.
Thank you. Sounds wonderful, and I look forward to seeing the video. I'm sure it'll be on our Facebook page?
Absolutely.
We have to, we have to do it now.
If there's any way that the school building committee can be of assistance to the, to the group, we'd be, we'd be happy to.
Absolutely. You know, as we're moving forward, and, you know, we're just going to start to plan the very basics of it, but we will.
You know, in terms of, you know, if there's a need to have a discussion with the architect or with the construction manager, we'd be happy to assist you.
That's great.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Short, and thank you.
Lauren and Emily, I just wanted to thank you once again for your leadership and for spending time with us tonight. We know that you have a lot of homework to do, so please feel free if you need to head home to get after it. So thank you.
Thanks.
I also wanted to call to the attention of the school committee and the community that we recently received a copy of a booklet that's called Twenty-five Ways the Americans with Disabilities Act Has Changed Lives, and it has been put out by the For Pause For Ability Group, and one of our students is featured in it, but I wanted to bring it for the school committee to be able to look at, and it's in our office if anybody else wants to stop by. But it really talks about the heart of the Americans with Disabilities Act, that providing access to all individuals and the use of service animals in terms of the supports that they provide and helping with that access. So I'll let you share that down with each other. And I also wanted to call to the public's attention that the foundation budget report has been released after about a year and a half of study and hearings across the Commonwealth. This group has put together a report with some recommendations that is now available as the legislature begins to look at the budget for next year, as well as for the governor's use. And what really is highlighted in this is some work that was done through the Superintendent's Association for several years, some commonalities there relative to really looking at the current foundation program and the formula utilized for that funding from the state flowing to districts, and how out of sync it is with actual costs, particularly in two areas. One would be health insurance areas, and the second is around the services to students with disabilities and the cost for those services. Another area that's been entered in that's under more discussion in this foundation report is also supports for English language learners. So we'll be sure that we're sharing that out. I was going to send it to the Chair of the FinCom, as well as sending it to Mrs. Spidel and the Board of Selectmen, and I know the school committee already has that, but it's available at the, at the website, the state website as well. So if anybody would like me to send that to them directly via PDF, they just need to contact my office as well. And with that, our quarter is ending this Friday, and, or the first term will be ending, and look to, parents and guardians should be looking at their electronic communications for updates around the reporting periods. For students at the middle school and the high school, of course, the elementary grades are on a different reporting cycle, but definitely from the high school, you'll be receiving some reports. I know that parent-teacher conferences are underway and have gone well, and we appreciate everyone's work in that and coming out. And we are looking forward to, there's been a football game that's been added to the schedule this Friday against Monitec at the Lunenburg High School. So it will be a great game, and it will also be a nice evening, so please come out and join us.
There's a field hockey playoff game.
And there's, thank you very much, that's right, and field hockey players are having a playoff game at four thirty, or four o'clock?
Four o'clock.
Four o'clock that day as well, also at the high school. So please join us, some exciting events coming up.
Excellent. Okay, so we have some warrants on the table. If anybody has any questions, please don't hesitate to ask, but we do have a line item transfer as well?
We do have one line item transfer. It's from Mr. Londa requesting a transfer of a hundred and fifty dollars from Maintenance of Grounds Supply to the Maintenance of Grounds Contract, which will bring that balance to twenty-eight hundred dollars in the full line. And the transfer is needed to cover the cost of removing some dead trees at the primary school. These trees needed to be removed because they were near Anna Butter's home, which was twenty to thirty feet off the property, but they were representing hazard, and so Mr. Londa promptly took care of those, and we just needed to make the line hold by moving this hundred and fifty dollars from the Maintenance of Grounds Supply line. So I recommend approval of that.
Any questions on that? Okay, thanks. All right, we have a couple of, we have some minutes to approve. We had regular session minutes from October 7th and October 21st, as well as executive session minutes from September 16th. Did anybody have any questions or comments, feedback on the minutes? Okay, we'll consider those minutes approved. And we're up to the school building committee report. Mr. Macken?
We've touched a couple of milestones. The building is now on permanent power as of today.
Oh, wow.
Weather tight. There'd be, the painting is continuing. They're making their way through. The media center is finished prep and is taking paint. The full tile for the high school wing is, for all intents and purposes, complete. And so again, we can, to be brief, we're on schedule and on budget. We meet again as the school building committee on the twelv-, yes, the 12th. Our normal meeting would have been on the 11th, but because of Veterans Day, it's been moved to the 12th, and of course, that's a open meeting, and the public is welcome to attend.
Wonderful. Thank you. We're up to new business, we have wine item of new business, and that's a Waterville Valley ice hockey trip. Mr. Short, would you like to join us?
Just here again for approval for the Waterville Valley trip, so I think we're going on eleven or twelve years now, we're going on a trip, at least eight years probably to Waterville Valley. So basically, we will leave Friday, I think it's December, December 4th or 3rd.
I haven't.
December 4th, yeah. I know the trip, I just needed that date. Friday, December 4th, we'll leave right after school at three o'clock. We'll go directly to Waterville Valley, New Hampshire. We will check in, have dinner. We have a practice scheduled for that night. We will head back to the hotel, the kids will be in the rooms, we have the same section of the snowy owl inn. The kids will be in bed probably by eleven, eleven, eleven-thirty, we'll get up in the morning, we have a team breakfast, team meeting, we have another skate, and then we will, some different activities in the hotel and around the area, lunch, and then another practice, team dinner, meeting, and then we have a scrimmage against Lexington High School that night. Lexington is basically mirroring our trip, they were up there last year, and they actually booked at the same exact time so that they would, they would have the ice and everything. And then we are going to play in the Fitchburg Jamboree on Sunday, so we're not going to practice in the morning, we're going to let the kids sleep in, come back to Lunenburg, and then we have a little scrimmage at four o'clock in Fitchburg. So basically, the point of the trip, it's to get the kids from the Air Shirley School and Lunenburg School and the new kids and the kids and just camaraderie and get them to know each other, and obviously, you know, the ice hockey benefit of it, but the bigger, the bigger piece is, you know, just getting them together for a solid weekend. They're, they look forward to it more than you can imagine. I mean, that's all they talk about, you know, just two simple nights in a hotel and a trip away, and it's just a huge, huge benefit. We see, you know, from the hockey standpoint, but also from just getting to know each other. We take everyone, eight through 12, we take the JV and the varsity, we have five chaperones, I think four, four coaches and Mr. Dupree. We have them separated, you know, by age and stuff, we keep a close eye on them. We take a charter bus up, charter bus back, all the meals are paid for. The only expense from the students is just spending money. They could go on the trip with absolutely nothing, we suggest that they, they bring a few bucks just to buy stuff up there, but all the meals are covered.
That's outstanding, that's a really nice job that's done by the boosters and.
Yeah, the parents and the boosters and the, you know, the few, the fundraising activities, the global tournament that we run, and the, actually, our alumni is a huge contributor to this. We, we, we host the alumni game, I think it's January 3rd this year, but this is like the fifth or sixth year. Last year, we had sixty-five alumni participate in the game, so we, they, it follows a high school game, we have a high school game, and then right after, we have an alumni tournament. And so all the alumni, they make a donation and they play and stuff, and so the money from that event is part of what helps funds. And the guys that play in that, they know that that's where the money's going, so they're happy to keep it going.
That's great.
It's, it's a proud tradition, and we're so appreciative of the efforts of all the coaches, because it's a very long weekend, very full weekend, as well as a season. As we're wrapping up the fall, we're getting ready for that winter season here. And I just want to acknowledge again Mr. Dupree, who has been such a force for the hockey program and across our schools and community in terms of really being such a fantastic model of responsible community membership, and it was delightful to see the students acknowledge him as one of the marshals for the homecoming parade this year, along with Mrs. Lussert. But certainly, Mr. Dupree is part of this group that makes this happen for the students every, or the athletes every year as well.
Yeah, Mr. Dupree, I mean, I think most people in the community know, but they may not even totally realize, the can trailer that's out on Mass Ave, Mr. Dupree takes care of that totally by himself. He brings in the, he puts it out, brings it back in either Sunday night or Monday morning. He deals with all the cans, all the money from the cans goes directly to the ice hockey program. He, you know, on top of that, he gets the kids t-shirts for the trip, he runs the gate at all our, our home games, he sets up the Waterville, you know, he's even taken over, he books the hotel rooms, he books the bus, he, you know, he rides on the bus like the general manager. It's really something. You know, and the kids now, you know, we make sure, you know, from kids that are now thirty-five years old to the kids that are fourteen, we make sure that they know, they know that all these benefits wouldn't necessarily be there if it wasn't for Mr. Dupree, so.
That's great.
So I recommend approval.
Is there a motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Short.
And I think we have no old business. Public comment, we're up to the public comment. You're our public tonight.
Phyllis Locke, Fifty Sunset Lane. I really appreciated that I, in the community, had the opportunity to learn of Mr. Short's work in the Master Teachers Program, you know, very worthwhile work, it's great to see this. I was wondering how many such projects are underway this year? How many master teacher projects?
Yeah, there's a handout out here.
It's down by the projectors?
In terms of projects, it's not necessarily associated, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve teachers that are involved in the master teacher project, and some have one project that they're working on, and a couple of them have multiple projects that they're working on, including the range of the projects are working directly with students after school in terms of some direct instruction to a lot of curriculum work going on, flipping classrooms, and helping spread technology practices across the district, and doing coursework, offering professional development, and being part of several kinds of our valuable advisory groups that are underway. So that's a smattering, and as I said, there is a handout that lists them, if you want to grab that, and we'll post it at the website as well for people to have access to.
Do, I look forward to hearing from more teachers participating in the program.
Thank you.
Any public comment from up here?
Yes. Just a, wanted to make sure people understood that one of the best parties of the year is going to be held this Saturday at the Eagle Club in Leominster to benefit the Lunenburg Boys and Girls Club, and it will feature food and music by the well-renowned hit record group.
Hit record?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. It's right on our poster.
Oh, there is a record on your poster, yeah. Oh, okay.
It's actually a record.
It is a record.
A record, wow.
Oh, my God.
Wheelhouse.
We're all big.
Some, some local boys made good. And it'll be a great time. And it is, as I said, for the benefit of the Boys and Girls Club of Lunenburg. It's fifteen dollars if you come alone, it's twenty-five dollars if you bring a squeeze. And it'll be a lot of fun. Silent auction, Chinese auction, food, a good time, good company. And, you know, as I always say, the Boys and Girls Club of Lunenburg is almost entirely dependent on donations to keep its doors open and through fundraisers. And we do a lot of fundraising. We are constantly fundraising. And so, we thought this would be something fun for us to do. We're also celebrating our 10th anniversary, providing really a very unique service to the kids of Lunenburg. We have over a hundred and twenty members now. There are days where we have seventy kids show up at the club.
There is.
Right. So, there, you know, it's, it's a, it's a very necessary, very well-used service. And we, you know, we are, you know, as Blanche Dubois said, we're, we're dependent on the kindness of strangers. And so, I would, I would encourage people to come and have a good time for a good cause.
Okay, thank you.
And how do you get tickets, Mike?
Well, you can get tickets online by going to the, our website.
And can you buy them at the door?
And you can buy them at the door.
If there are any left.
For the same price, if there are any left by then.
If there are any left. Okay.
So, I would suggest you go online right now.
Right now?
In a few more minutes. Okay, we're up to reports. FINCOM?
They didn't have a meeting, and their next meeting is November 12th. And they're going to be getting ready for the special town meeting, which is Monday, November 16th.
Excellent. School councils, Annie?
Lunenburg, the primary school doesn't have another one until December 9th because of the holidays.
Sure.
There was a high school meeting today that I was unable to attend.
Okay, middle school?
We have not met since the last meeting.
Okay.
Like the last we reported.
Sure. PTO?
They have a meeting on Monday.
Monday.
Yep, the 9th, right?
Yeah, November 9th.
Policy, we had a short virtual meeting last Thursday for about a half an hour. We're meeting again.
The 12th.
The 12th, yes, next Thursday at 7:30 in TCP Building Room 13. Capital Planning Committee, Annie?
They did have a meeting. I was unable to attend, but they met with, it was GPW.
Okay. Do we have a date for the school yet?
Not that I'm aware of.
And I have, I have no idea when the next meeting is yet.
Okay. Wellness Advisory Committee, Annie?
Well, the next meeting is December 9th.
Okay. PACSEL?
Not meeting currently.
I saw some, she was requesting something, though. I saw it in some newsletter. I don't know where, yeah. It was the Panda Pitter Patter or something.
Oh, probably. She wanted to target the younger fans.
Yeah, I did see, she's looking for people to join her.
Trying to increase membership, yeah, okay.
Because there's currently just her.
Yeah, so I think I might have seen it in Panda Pitter Patter, which she wouldn't have seen.
Okay, the reuse committee, have they met recently?
They did. They met on the 28th of October. There's a presentation by Charlie Hay of Tape Pay, who is doing the feasibility study on just some preliminary look around space needs of the town, as we've, we've established what, what the potential, well, what the actual conditions of the various buildings are, and what, some, some thoughts about what potentially we, we might be working around. Where we came to in the group was that we're getting a matrix from Charlie Hay, similar to the one that was developed for the school building project, which is to look at, you know, scenario A, scenario B, scenario C, scenario D, you know, what's, you know, what's the, what's the upside, what's the downside.
Sure.
So, that's the next piece of work, which is that we're going to take a look at the buildings that are a part of the reuse, look, and, and come up with a, a plan that, you know, will clearly look at each of the properties and say, well, this is, this is a potential here, and these are the pros and these are the cons.
Okay, great. Transition and reconfiguration.
Yes, our, our group has continued to meet in conjunction with furnitures, fixtures, and equipment meetings that we're having as we're putting together those bid documents. I think the, what I want to talk about in terms of our major focus of our work right now has been getting the bid documents together, or the information for the bid documents, which our owner's project manager will actually put the bid out there at some point in time with the information we provide around the actual move. So, we're at that point where we've ordered some boxes, and those are at the high school as well as the middle school. We're going to be starting to get some guidance from Mr. Londa around approximating the number of boxes that are going to be needed for the moves that we're making, some guidance around what goes and what stays. Our teachers have all, already started to cull items in their classroom, both equipment-wise as well as, as paper and furniture-wise. That's been an ongoing work, as you know, for the last year across our buildings with Mr. Londa's guidance in that area. But that will take more form and function and be articulated. Our plan, as it currently stands, has a lot of blank spaces relative to the steps on that move, but that's being defined through these, this series of meetings, and so that will be fully articulated. I think the other thing that I wanted to point out about our reconfiguration and transition work is that we identified that we want to add to that reconfiguration and transition plan a separate section that talks about ensuring that we work with police and other, and fire, and our public safety folks to make sure that all of our safety plans and evacuation routes and those kinds of things are well-articulated. We anticipate, in addition to having a virtual tour, that our students and teachers will have some time before school actually ends to be present in the building, given when we'll achieve a certificate of occupancy and the building will be turned over to us. So, that's part of the logistical pieces as well. So, those are the points that we're just putting more details to around and continuing to progress with FAQs. It was great. I'm, I'm so appreciative of the leadership group to be putting together a student FAQ. You know, we have one for the public, for parents and guardians and the general community at large. We've had one working and, and growing FAQ for our staff and faculty. And so, I think all the various constituencies now have those kinds of documents that will be a ready source of information, depending on what perspective you're looking at and the kinds of questions that you have. So, that work is, is intense and time-consuming, but very rewarding and exciting at the same time. So, we continue to have those details, so it's a very smooth transition for everyone.
I'm sure we're all looking forward to that, that day. Okay, Diversity Advisory Committee is meeting tomorrow evening, I think at six something. I don't remember the time. It must be posted, so you can find that on the website. Six o'clock. Start time, subcommittee probably has not met?
We have not met.
Okay. And reconfiguration advisory?
Our next meeting is Tuesday, December 1st at 7:00 PM in the LHS library.
Excellent. And that's when you're going to go look at items in the building?
Yes.
Wonderful. Okay, that's the end of the agenda. Anything else we need to talk about? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This was our last meeting. This was supposed to be ours.
Thank you. Thanks again. Appreciate it. Shortest meeting.
Yeah. This was supposed to be last one.
Twenty minutes to eight is a world record.
I will not be here at the next meeting. Nor will I.
I bet you will not either.